Apologize, we're getting started a little bit late. We had some interviews upstairs and we're done now. So, we will start our meeting in just a couple minutes. Our May 3, 2018 Town Council Meeting to Order, and we are privileged to have our Cub Scouts here today, all dressed up, ready to go. And Councilmember Cook will assist.
Well, thank you Mayor and Council. We have a young man, Max. Come next to me. Max, you have a great assignment to do here in a minute. Can we all rise? And Max will lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, Max. The Council has a gift for all of you. We all like gifts, don't we? Well, as we go down the row here, could you please share us your name? And for the Scouts, your rank with that. And then I'm going to hand you a gift, which is a pocket constitution of the United States. So, when you come next time, we'll give you a test and see how well you do. Would that be all right? All right, thank you.
My name's Jeff.
Michelle.
Max Brown, and I'm a Wee Blow.
Nathan Coleman, and I'm a Wee Blow.
Zach Wilhampson, I'm a Wee Blow.
Caleb Wilkin, and I'm a Wee Blow.
Dylan Forn, I'm a Wee Blow.
Ben Wilkin, and I'm a Wee Blow.
Well, could we have a round of applause for our Scouts? And thank you for attending today's Council Meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook, and thank you, Wee Blows. We appreciate you. At this time, we'd like to invite Pastor Eric Jones to offer us an invocation and also hello to Velvet over there, Velvet Jones.
Thank you, Mayor Daniels, Councilmembers. I'm Eric Jones, and I was a Wee Blow. So, good job, guys. Congratulations. You know, I was just thinking, thank you for inviting me to open in prayer today. And this is the National Day of Prayer, so extremely special day around the United States today. People are praying for unity. That's basically the theme. And as I was thinking about unity, it kind of seems like a far-fetched idea in a lot of ways and a lot of sectors and areas of our society today, very polarized. But I also know that nothing is impossible with God. He is the God of the impossible. I think of what's going on in Korea right now, where you have a communist dictator going across and shaking hands and talking peace with South Korea. That's a miracle. So, let's pray for the impossible. Lord, we thank you that you are the God of the impossible. You are the God of miracles. And you bring peace where there's war. You bring healing where there's brokenness. You bring hope where there's despair. You bring love where there's hate. And you bring light where there's darkness. And so, we just know that about you. And we thank you that even as we just said the Pledge of Allegiance, that this is one nation under God. And we continue to need your guidance, your blessing on this nation. I thank you for the amazing, special community that we live in here in Gilbert, Arizona. I thank you for our mayor, our council, all of our leaders, our first responders, our teachers, God, our community that we have here. We are such a blessed people here in Gilbert, and we do not take that for granted. And we seek your guidance and your love and your mercy and your continued peace in and through our lives. And so, I just declare in the name of Jesus, mercy and grace and peace and unity to thrive in this community. May the name of Jesus be lifted high, the only one who brings peace, the Prince of Peace. And may this community continue to be blessed, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Jones. I failed to mention, but want to make sure I quickly recognize that Pastor Jones and Velvet are great leaders from Evident Life Community Church just north here on Gilbert Road. And they do a tremendous amount for the community on so many levels. So, thank you for your continued contributions. We're grateful to have you in Gilbert. The Clerk will conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bridget Peterson. Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray. Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. We do have seven items to cover. We're going to do this very quickly. We don't want to miss anyone, and we certainly don't want to give anybody less time than they actually deserve. But we do recognize that everyone else's time is short as well. So, Councilmember Peterson will kick it off. Councilmember Anderson will follow with Agenda Item 2. And then we will continue on. Vice Mayor Peterson, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Lisa Maxwell to please come up and join me. We are recognizing Municipal Clerks Week. And we have a very long proclamation here because there's no way to really outline and define the work that the Clerk's Office does for all of us on a regular basis, for our citizens of this community. When you're running for office, this is the person that you're always most in contact with in this community. And we want her to know and her whole staff to know just how thankful we are for everything that they do. And it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Municipal Clerk. Now, therefore, on behalf of Jen Daniels, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, we do hereby proclaim May 6, 2018 through May 12, 2018, as Municipal Clerks Week. In Gilbert, Arizona, we further extend appreciation to our Municipal Clerk, Lisa Maxwell, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Thank you, Lisa.
David, would you like to come up? David Fabiano. We'd like to also recognize National Public Works Week. You know, a lot of us take for granted the infrastructure in our town, our streets, our curbs, our gutters, sidewalks, utilities. But there's a great amount of work that's done by our team here in public works. And we want to recognize them tonight and proclaim May 21 through the 27th as National Public Works Week. And this reads in part, "We urge all our people to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association," which I think Dave has, you've been very active in. "...and government agencies and activities, events and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety and quality of life." Congratulations. Whole team, come on up.
I love seeing this team all dressed up. That looks great. They're all a hands-on group. We appreciate what they do.
All right. Can I invite our tourism team up? Glenn Schlotman and Lauren Conangala? Conangala? Oh my goodness. Conangla, oh my goodness. I got to get back to my Student Citizens of the Month days and do that a little better. Well, thank you. Again, we're being very efficient here, but we want to talk for just a minute about Economic Development and Travel and Tourism Week. And so, I'm just going to share the last few lines of this with all of you before we take a picture together. Whereas tourism in Gilbert generated 210 million in visitor spending, created 1,700 jobs and resulted in 21 million in hotel sales in 2017. And whereas travel is a pillar of economic growth, creating jobs at a faster rate than other sectors nationally. And whereas the Gilbert Office of Economic Development supports vibrant communities to enhance the quality of life for residents of Gilbert, now, therefore, Jen Daniels, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, does hereby proclaim May 6 through 12, 2018, as Economic Development and Travel and Tourism Week. Let's hear it for our team who's supporting that. Okay, next, I'd like to bring forward John Kennedy and Jennifer Loria, please. We're recognizing, as you see here at the bottom, on May 19, Kids to Park Day. And these are two individuals that help us so much in our park system here in Gilbert. John Kennedy on staff. Jennifer Loria with our foundation to raise money. And Joan McGlaughlin. And I'm going to give you just a second here to tell us a little bit about this and how we can get our kids to the park day. If you take 15 seconds, because Mayor wants us to keep moving along here.
We'd just like to recognize first the foundation for sponsoring the app that we're going to be launching at Kids to Parks Day. So, it's kind of a fun augmented reality application that we'll be launching that day to get kids out on their devices, which they love to be on. So, should be a fun day.
Perfect. And since we have the education lorax here, our homework is to look up the app and to look up the foundation to learn how we can support our park system. And as a council and mayor, on behalf of Mayor Daniels, we're pleased to present this proclamation to you. Big hand for them.
I'd like to invite Walter up. Where's Walter and his family? Come on down, Walter. Oh, and your family, yep. Behind every town employee, we have town family. And we want to make sure that they're all recognized. Walter, you have done some pretty tremendous things in the 28 years that you have worked for the Town of Gilbert. You have done everything from launch Freestone Park to work on every single vehicle that we have in our fleet and just a wide variety of contributions. You've probably changed careers and stayed with the town a few times. Tell us what your highlight has been, being a part of the town for 28 years.
Highlight of my career being with the town has been awesome. It's been rewarding. It's been challenging. It's been interesting. It's been fun. And I've enjoyed the 28 years I've been with the town. And in being here part-time seasonal for years, so it's actually 29, and I've loved every minute of it. And I'd love to keep going and bug you guys with more stories, but I don't want to bore you. But it's been a pleasure and an honor to work for Gilbert.
You'll have to write the book about what working for the Town of Gilbert really feels like. And who did you bring with you tonight?
This is my wife Debbie.
Hi, I'm Deb.
Thank you so much for being here tonight. We really appreciate it. I'm going to read a couple of lines to this. We've touched on a little bit of the accomplishments. There's many, many more. But I would like to say that Walter has been a valuable employee who has performed his duties with skill and precision. Walter leaves the Fleet Services Department with several commendations and accolades for his outstanding performance. His dependability, integrity and helpfulness have earned him esteem from his peers, supervisors and residents alike. On behalf of the Town Council and all of the residents of Gilbert who have been touched by your service, it is with respect and gratitude that we extend our appreciation for your contributions and hard work that have bettered Gilbert every step of the way. So, thank you, Walter. We're proud of you. Wives and moms always get to take whatever pictures they want.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I am very honored and privileged to invite Dina Aguilera here to the front. And could I have all of the prosecution team, as well as our PD team and our courts team, anyone that has anything to do with Dina? Well, Jim, I'm going to have you actually kick this off because I need to get out of the way here.
I'd be happy to. Jim Nugabauer, Town Prosecutor. And it is my absolute honor and privilege to be on this stage today and introduce you, if you have not met her before, to Dina Aguilera. She's worked, obviously, very, very hard for her whole career as a victim advocate for the Town of Gilbert. She started, I think, in Mesa, but most recently here at the Town of Gilbert for over 12 years. And she's dedicated her career and her life to helping victims of crime and providing resources and being just a constant in this community. I'm privileged to be her supervisor, and the Town is extremely lucky to have Dina on its staff and to work here on a daily basis. With me today is Vic Perez. He's a detective here with the Town of Gilbert in support. Tom Taylor also is an attorney in my office. He's here to support as well. Zach Altman actually nominated her for this award, so he will be saying just a couple of things. And then we're also privileged to have Haley and Elizabeth Ortiz with the Arizona Prosecuting Advisory Attorney Advisory Council, APAC for short. They're actually one that are presenting Dina with, in this case, the Lifetime Achievement Award. And it's very, very special. She's the first advocate, and I'm sure Elizabeth, as well as Zach, will tell you, to ever receive this award. And she works here at the Town of Gilbert. So, it's fantastic that they're here too. So, thank you both for being here as well. But I'll pass it over for Zach, so he can kind of talk to you about her nomination.
Thank you, Jim. Mayor and Council, thank you. As Jim explained, I nominated Dina for this award. I'll read just a short part of the nomination that I wrote for her. Dina Aguilera has dedicated 24 years of her life to victim advocacy. When people find themselves in the midst of chaos, Dina is their strength. From explaining the victims' rights afforded to them by the Arizona Constitution and statutes, to assisting them through the process of obtaining an order of protection, injunction against harassment, safety planning and identifying resources to empower and educate victims and their offenders, Dina is always there to help. In the event our office declines prosecution of a victim's case, Dina eloquently balances the emotional state and desires of the victim with the burden of proof and decisions made by our office's attorneys. Rather than focusing on a conviction, she leads victims through the day-to-day process of healing from the emotional or physical injuries caused by the crimes which were committed against them. She sees the big picture. She does the right thing for the right reason.
How about a round of applause with that? Now, you might have some words that you'd like to share.
Thank you so much. Haley Zimmerman and myself are very honored to be here to represent the APAC Council. The APAC Council consists of the Attorney General of Arizona, all 15 county attorneys, several chief city court prosecutors, the Dean of the U of A Law School and the Director of the Administrative Office of the Supreme Court. This is the first time the Council has ever given a Lifetime Achievement Award for a victim advocate. I am a career prosecutor. I admire and appreciate the work of victim advocates more than I can ever express, and I cannot think of a more worthy recipient. So, on behalf of the Council, it is my honor to present this to you.
Dina, we have one more. On behalf of the Council, we applaud Dina's exemplary leadership and service and are proud to join with the APAAC in recognizing Dina's achievement. We hereby commend Dina for her excellence of character and the honor she has brought not only to herself, but to her family and community. On behalf of Mayor Jen Daniels and the Council, we thank you. Well, I guess we'll allow you to say something.
Hi. First, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Zach for the nomination, my supervisor, Jim, and those who supported it. I would also like to thank APAC for recognizing the important work that advocates do every day. You know, the creation of this award, I feel, shows advocates that prosecutors recognize and value our work. In receiving this award, this shows and recognition of my work. I thank you.
Well, thank you. And on behalf of the Cook family, many years ago, we can only thank you as well. And you've just been phenomenal and just fantastic to our community. With that, thank you.
It is a special honor and a privilege to recognize someone who has made a tremendous impact on the state of Arizona. I often think it's unfortunate that sometimes we wait until people are gone to express how much they have meant to us. But I am truly grateful to be able to recognize a tremendous leader, Rodney Rod Lewis. We have the Governor of the Gila River Indian Community, Stephen Roe Lewis, with us today. Would you come forward? If you want to bring any of your family, you're welcome to do that as well. The Governor doesn't come here very often, so we're grateful that we have the Governor of the Gila River. Thank you. Thank you for being here. I know it's probably been a difficult time for you and for all of your family. So, thank you for allowing us to recognize both the contributions of your father and the sacrifices that your family have made over many, many years, as you've contributed so much to this great state. I do have a proclamation I'd like to read and to recognize some of the really tremendous things that have been done by your father. It says, "Whereas after a rich and full life serving his family, the Gila River Indian Community and his country, Rod Lewis passed away on April 10, 2018. And whereas Mr. Lewis earned his bachelor's degree from Trinity University in Texas, his Juris Doctorate from the University of California, Los Angeles, and a master's degree from Arizona State University. And whereas he served in the US Army from 1962 to 1965, where he was both airborne and Ranger qualified, and reached the rank of First Lieutenant." And if that's not enough, listen to all the rest of the things that he did. "He served as the General Counsel for the Gila River Indian Community for 30 years, beginning in 1978. And he served as a role model for generations, as the first tribal member in Arizona to become a member of the State Bar of Arizona, the first tribal member in the nation to argue before the US Supreme Court, and the first to win a US Supreme Court case, and the first tribal member to serve on the Board of the Central Arizona Project. And whereas his experience, leadership and legal acumen were critical in achieving the Arizona Water Settlements Act of 2004, which brought dozens of parties together and has played a key role in the growth of the valley." Gilbert would not be what it is today without that Water Settlements Act. "His leadership extended beyond our state as his efforts led to the Crow Nation Water Settlement of 2010 and the Pachanga Water Settlement of 2016. He is survived by three children, John Blaine, Catherine Elizabeth, Stephen Roe, the Governor of the Gila River Indian Community, and seven grandchildren." That's the joy in the posterity part. "We are thankful for Rod Lewis and the lasting positive impact he has had on our community, state and nation, and it is fitting for us to provide a special recognition. Therefore, be it further resolved, we will attempt to serve our community, to dedicate ourselves to the better world around us in the example of Rod Lewis." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the Council. I'm here with my sister Catherine, her daughter Sarah, and my mother, Willardine Lewis. And, you know, a few words really can explain the love that we have for our Father, who is resting. But also, you know, the proclamation that was beautifully articulated. You know, only a few words can sum up a person's life. But he was our Father. He was a son to the Gila River Indian Community. And he always told me, and I learned so much leadership from him, being someone who was brought up in the Presbyterian Church. His father, the late Reverend Roe Lewis, was one of the first ordained Presbyterian ministers. He was committed to public service and giving back to the community. And that drove him to go into the military and to come back and to bring his education back to his community. But he always told me the importance of, and this is what I bring as Governor, the importance of the surrounding communities, keeping those positive relationships going. The water truly connects us, and the water will always connect the Gila River Indian Community with this great city of Gilbert. And I just want to say, thank you so much from the bottom of my heart, from my family's heart, the recognition that you give my Father here today. This is truly, I'm truly at a loss for words, and my family will be forever grateful for this proclamation here tonight. Thank you so much.
Mayor, as you're making your way up here, maybe I could go ahead and invite Mr. Joe Guissick up for communications from citizens. Joe, if you could just give us your name and your town of residence for the record, please.
Joe Guissick, Gilbert resident. I'm tired. Madam, excuse me, Mayor Daniels, Town Council Members, all Gilbert's staff, residents and guests of our beautiful community. As I said, my name is Joe Guissick, and I'm the lovable, slightly annoying American citizen on the Education Lorax. I spent almost nine hours at the Capitol last night just to observe. And I want to share a story from a scenario that's probably not endearing for any of us to ever witness. I ask you to never, ever not listen or have a conversation with yourselves or all of your employees. I know a few years ago, the meet and confer process was taken out. I understand that that was done for a particular reason. I wanted to find the words for you. Meet, to meet, to sit down. Confer, discuss. If it ever turns into a contract negotiation, that should never be the fault of those on the other side, but where the dais sits. I share that with you distinctly for you to keep thou's boundaries clear. But... their wages, or actually it's adding more to their money. At the end of the day, it is for the future of our community. Those compensation packages for the mayor and the town council should be set appropriately for these positions, so that in the future, we attract the very best and the most talented. As I said, I am extremely tired on three and a half hours of sleep, so I'm going to leave, and I know you have a lot of work to do, so hopefully I'll save a few seconds here for you. But I thank you truly for all you do. Have a good night.
Thank you, Joe. At this time, we will move to the consent calendar. Are there any items to be pulled?
Mayor, first, I'd like to let you know that Councilmember Ray has joined us by telephone.
Excellent.
And so he's on there, and we don't want to forget about him down there, and that we have only had item number 13 to be requested to be pulled off of our consent agenda. And I would be happy to move forward with that now.
Please.
So for consent agenda, for our consent calendar tonight, I'd like to move that we approve item 8, 9, 9A, 10, 11, 12, 14, and I'd like to request that we add 21A, since it's been requested to be continued to May 17, to the consent agenda.
27?
Oh, yes. Councilmember Cook, would you like to do number 27?
I would love to. Thank you. I recommend that we appoint to the Parks and Recreation Board three regular members with terms beginning on May 13, 2018, and ending on May 12, 2021. And those individuals are Les Presnick, Jennifer Jones, and Mark Laporte, and one regular member to complete the remaining of a term, beginning on May 3, 2018, and ending on May 12, 2019, and that would be Edward Madrid.
I accept that as part of my motion.
Second.
Please vote. Councilmember Ray, by phone. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item 13.
Mayor, I pulled that item, that's being the, I know it's a preliminary capital improvement plan, but I have quite a few concerns, and, you know, we have some other big items, and this one is preliminary, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on it, but I just wanted to show one item for the overhead, if I can get help with that, real quickly here. And while I'm waiting for help, somebody?
Amy, could you assist? He has a paper right here. He just wants to put on the overhead. Oh, Kelly's got it. Thank you. Teamwork.
All right. So while I'm waiting on that, I've made it clear that I don't think we should be using debt for repair and replacement, and I am really grateful that it seems that we've set a new trajectory to move away from that, but we still have quite a bit of that in our CIP, and I don't support that. There's some other projects that I'm just opposed to as well, and, you know, I don't need to belabor that. But I did want to show one thing that was really interesting. First of all, I need to make an acknowledgement of Kelly Fost. I have never seen someone give me so much data as fast as she has. It is amazing. It really is. And I felt really bad. I really bombarded her pretty badly, but I spent many, many hours wrapping my brain around a lot of different numbers and figures and things. So out of that, I was looking at this whole question of contingency. This came up last budget cycle. You know, we have a lot of money that's unspent at the end of each fiscal year. It's a lot. And one of the reasons that was given for that is contingency. So I just wanted to show how that actually breaks down here. You can look at the first four columns if you'd like, but that's just your total budget. What I wanted to focus on was the contingency columns. That's the next four columns. And then the budget and actuals with this contingency removed. So you don't have contingency in the budget number, and you don't have in the actual number. So you're really looking at everything except for contingency. The most interesting thing, I think, here is if you go to the last line, this is our most recent fiscal year, which isn't even complete yet. We could see more contingency spent between now and then, as well as the rest of the budget. But if you look, we've spent 55% of what we set aside for contingency so far, or we project to. So now, if you go to the budget without all the contingency in it, look, we've only spent 40%. If you know much about budgeting, that's pretty ironic, because you're spending more of money you set aside just in case, not knowing what you might need it for. You spent more of that than what you actually budgeted to spend, as if you knew and planned and needed to spend it. And that is, to me, very backwards and concerns me. Now, that's kind of recent. You can see other numbers aren't quite so backwards in previous years, but our most recent fiscal year, that's what it looks like. And so this is something Councilmember Taylor has brought up, and I concur with it. We have way too much budgeted versus what we really need to spend. Obviously, at the end of the year, you find out what you needed to spend based on what you spent, and there could actually be some waste in there. Who knows? But anyway, that is not good. I don't think we have the kind of fiscal constraint that a budget should provide when we have that wide of a gap. So that's my concern. Thank you, Mayor, for the time.
Absolutely. Kelly, can you touch on those, the projects that we've done? I know we've moved a few things around this year in order to accomplish more than usual, and obviously, those contingency dollars are of critical importance. So thanks.
Certainly, Mayor. We do use the contingency sparingly on projects that have the business case. Anything below $50,000 still comes to council and has that visibility in the quarterly report to know what that is. Anything above $50,000 comes to council for specific approval whenever we use the contingency. On the underspend on the budget, the majority of it is not on the contingency side. The majority of it is on our capital improvement projects, which carry over from year to year. So that's mostly what gets unspent in the budget, as we're continuing to work on projects. The personnel or the contractual side gets mostly spent each year.
Before you pick that up, Jared, and I understand that that's why this is germane to this item, because we're talking about the CIP, and I didn't point out the percentages, but we spent 55% of contingency and only 40% of budget. Maybe I did say that, but just wanted to point that out.
Mayor, thank you. So, and Councilmember Peterson, thank you for highlighting that. And that's definitely a concern about how much slack we have in here. When I looked at some of the line items, there's $265 million of things classified as miscellaneous, future growth funding, unidentified miscellaneous parks and rec. And they all have stories behind them, but they're not really tight like we see in private sector, and the public might say, well, why do I care? You know, it's just numbers and projections and things like that. And let me tell you why it does matter. And I pointed this out a couple of years ago. We had something, because it hits property taxes, in some cases it does. And the example that we had a couple of years ago was there was $6 million that were driving the levy, and we're going to talk about that a little bit later on. I asked at the end of the year, how much of that did, and we were saying, we have to do it, have to do it, have to do it. I was hoping we could shave 1.5, 1.4 off of that, so that we wouldn't have to increase the tax levy. At the end of the year, I asked, how much of that did we actually spend? And it was $200,000 to $300,000. Yet, we taxed and increased the taxes for that amount that we were certain that we were going to do. So, you know, it's one thing to have slack in the budget, and it's just paper slack, but when it starts to affect the taxes that we ask of our residents, I think that's where we should pay more attention and why this really, really matters, Mayor. So I'm not supportive of this tonight. If it's moved, if it's tightened up and comes back, I'd certainly love to have more conversation on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Just one specific item in the CIP. Tonight, we spent a little time recognizing the efforts that are happening in tourism. We're embarking on finishing out the third riparian area, and there is a specific item, a line item, on a riparian visitor slash education center that keeps getting pushed out over 10 years. I think it's a mistake to keep pushing that out. We need to take the time and look at that and see what kind of an investment we could make that might have an impact on the community, and that's just some input on that item.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Councilmember Ray, do you have any comments on the phone?
Mayor, I apologize. I do not, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. I would just like to touch on a couple of different things that were said. One is that our community is still growing, so benefit for us is that keeping the rate the same, not changing the rate, actually does increase the revenues without putting added burden on any individual resident. So we're actually going to talk about that a little bit later, but as it relates to the CIP, I've gotten so many emails over the last six months from residents asking us to move projects up. There's things that have been programmed out for two, three, four, five years, and the citizens are asking us to move these projects up, which is, that's what our contingency, we keep $100 million in contingency for our CIP plan. The purpose for that is that we can and have the option to move projects like Val Vista Road, which I know is critical to some of the individuals that are here tonight, how critical that is for our residents to be able to access homes in a quick and efficient and really a safe way. So thankfully, we have that policy in place, and we do adhere to that. Every single dollar that the town of Gilbert spends is accounted for. Absolutely. And a lot of times, people get, I get, let's call it overly excited about the dollars, but recognize that we fund every CIP project at the very beginning, even if it's a multi-year project, and that is the best practice. You want to make sure that your community has all the funds to both design, construct, and complete a project before they actually start moving dirt around. And I'm proud to say that the town of Gilbert does that, and that we are very responsible in that way. So with that, I am actually excited to consider this draft CIP plan, Agenda Item 13, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve Agenda Item 13.
I will second that, Mayor.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote. Councilmember Ray? That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. That moves us to the public hearing items. Is there any public hearing item that our council wishes to pull to discuss?
Mayor, 21, please.
Okay. And I have one question on Agenda Item 19 that I failed to let David Hobbiano know ahead of time, but you've seen emails about it, so that will give you a clue before we get there. Okay. If Agenda Item 21 is the only one, I will open the public hearing on Agenda Items 15, 16, 17, 18, 20, 22, and 23, and close the public hearing on those items and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Items 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20.
Not 19.
Oops, not 19. Sorry. Withdrawn 19. 20, 22, or, hold on. Yeah, 22 and 23.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. I heard you, Councilmember Ray. My question on Agenda, oh, I will open the public hearing on Agenda Item 19. This will be brief. David, Amy, whoever wants to take it. It's about the street alignment. I know there's been some question and concern about two different projects that are basically permitted and approved and ready to go, but a difference in a street alignment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to look behind me for just a second to see if I can get an exhibit to share with you.
Oh, okay. I sprung it on you. I apologize.
I think Nathan's got a picture for us. This, the concern arises for, there are two different projects that are being proposed along Val Vista Road, north of Chandler Heights. One of them is a 332-lot subdivision that's going to be on the west side of Chandler Heights. It will take up the quarter section that exists there northwest of Chandler Heights and Val Vista. The other project is about a 10-acre subdivision that's on the east side of Val Vista Road. It generally aligns up with Powell on the, again, going to the east. The alignments of the entrances to those two subdivisions are set in such a way that they're about 200 feet apart. Val Vista Road is a major arterial road in the town of Gilbert and has six lanes there, and it's got a raised median that separates that, again, to separate the traffic and keep the condition more safe. Our standards call for the entrance points for access onto the roads that are going to be intersecting and coming onto the major arterial roads to be at the quarter-mile and half-mile locations. The subdivision on the, the proposed subdivision on the west side is at that quarter-mile point. The one that's on the east side is not, and with the separation that is there, it's impossible to put in a left-turn access through that median.
Let me just ask you this, then, David. Art, I just want us to have a public record that you are continuing to explore what options might be available in order to assist both.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we're looking to the property owners and they, to see if they're able to bring those into alignment where the movements can be executed safely, then that the concern that had been raised to the members of the town council would be able to be addressed. If they're not able to align those, then we would have to, again, the public safety and the driver's safety is paramount and needs to be protected.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any other questions for David on this item? All right. I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 19 and entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote as well. Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item 21.
Mayor, thank you. I pulled this item, I read through it. I don't have a problem with the new enforcement in there. I'm concerned about the way that the permitting is set up here, and let me just ask a question. And I talked to Chris about this before the meeting, but I've been very busy, and we've both been busy, so it's been hard to get everything straightened out here. But if we pass this ordinance tonight, we give authority to the town manager to, or his designee, to basically issue permitted parking in designated areas, correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, that's correct.
Okay. What about on the other side of it, as far as, do we have authority to, now those who are permitted be now restricted to just, if they have a permit, they have to actually park in their permitted area? Is that something we can do with this ordinance, or is that something we'd have to look at later?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, that's not something we contemplated with this. It was more of an opportunity to provide the spaces closest to the business establishments for the customers to enjoy those spaces and have the employees within the district park in the lesser desirable spaces on the top floors of the garage, but we did not anticipate going out with any type of enforcement mechanism, looking for employee cars parked in other spaces to force them to comply with that.
My challenge here, Patrick, is I don't, so I'm an employee. I have this permit. Unless there's some consequence, I'm going to take the closest spot I come to, especially if I'm getting into work, and I'm probably not going to show up way early. My time's valuable. I mean, I just really don't think the way this is designed is necessarily going to drive people to those spots. I just don't think it is. And I also, I'm concerned with an exclusive use of a public asset. That's basically what they're being granted, and we're not charging them for that, and I'm okay if we don't charge them for it, as long as now they need to act, they're assigned. If it's designed as assigned parking, well, now they've agreed to give up their right to park just anywhere, and in exchange, we've given them the right to park somewhere very specific. So there's been a give and take, and it's fine. But furthermore, it'll help to ensure people actually use the area. I just, I don't think it's going to be effective, and I'm concerned also that we've now cordoned off a public space that the taxpayers have all paid for, and what are they getting in exchange? There's nothing guaranteed, anyway. So that's my concern. So I'm not, I like the concept. I just think we need to go a little further with it and make sure it's actually going to happen the way that we are talking about.
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, we're certainly going to work with the merchants in the area to monitor how it's working and how we've given them the right to park somewhere very specific. So there's been a give and take, and it's fine. But, and furthermore, it'll help to ensure people actually use the area. I just, I just, I don't think it's going to be effective. And I'm concerned also that we've now cordoned off a public space that the taxpayers have all paid for. And what are they getting in exchange? There's nothing guaranteed anyway. So that's my concern. So I'm not, I like the concept. I just think we need to go a little further with it and make sure it's actually going to happen the way that we are talking about.
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, we're certainly going to work with the merchants in the, the area to monitor how it's working and how it's doing. The goal is to work with them and have them work with their employees through a voluntary means to request that they park in that area to save the prime spaces for those patrons, much as what happens in many business establishments who request that their employees take the farther-out parking space within their parking areas so that the patrons have the spaces closest to the establishments.
There's, I just, I was looking for Amanda, sorry. That's why I was sort of scanning the crowd, because Amanda Elliott is the one that's worked directly with our merchants on this process. And part of the concern has been when some of our restaurants close midnight or later, you've got lots of employees walking, and they want them to all be walking together to the same location. So that's part of it. Also, it's not a secret that we've had lots of trouble, let's say, with the top floor of the parking garage in downtown. And by designating that employee parking and creating specific access to that area via permit, you're also creating a space where you won't have individuals, as we have had currently, loitering in that area and causing some trouble. So there's, this is multifaceted, and it seemed like a solution that would assist everyone. Obviously, this is a, in many ways, a pilot program. I think they only said we're going to do, what, 200 tags or 100 tags? It's not a lot. And each individual business will get a quantity of those. But it is a multifaceted program for many reasons, and one that public safety, the prosecutor's office, the downtown merchants, and our economic development team have all worked on. So I apologize if that wasn't all included in the packet, but I was able to sit down and visit on this, so.
Mayor, I understand. I think pretty much everything you explained to me is things that I've understood. Again, it only serves that purpose if people use it for that. And we're talking to business owners, they're going to have one perspective, and if, employees may have a little different perspective, and we don't know that they'll use it. I guess all, what I'd like, I hope we can, we can ask staff to come back at the end of the pilot. If there's a firm commitment that they'll come back at the end of the pilot and report on its effectiveness, I mean, I could be okay for tonight, but I really need that follow-up. Otherwise, I'm not, I'm not on board. We need to have this followed-up, because I am concerned that it won't function as designed at this point.
We're, we're happy to work with the merchants and track the, the metrics around it and see how it works and come back to you with recommendations on maybe, maybe ways in which we'd like to change it to make it more effective.
All right, Mayor, with that, I'm ready to make a motion unless there's other comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. Town Attorney and I had a discussion on this a couple of days ago. I just wanted to make sure that whatever we're doing here, we have good signage that gives law enforcement the ability to enforce what we're doing here. And Chris, I don't know if you, we didn't have a chance to follow up. I know time got away here real quick. Do we feel that we're in a good spot here? Or, because I'm supportive of the wording here with the discussion tonight, but I want to make sure that our police have law enforcement capability as we intend them to have.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, we do, we have the signage ready to go. Public Works will start creating those signs if the council decides to approve this. The signs will be up within 30 days of tonight. That would be the effective date of this ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I move to approve Item 21, with the additional direction to staff to come back after the pilot and report on the effectiveness of the program.
I will close the public hearing on Agenda Item 21 and accept that motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Please vote. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That completes our public hearing items. And in order to comply with state law, we will recess our regular meeting and reconvene in special meeting for our budget hearing. Agenda Items 24 and 25, and I believe Kelly will provide, is there no bread on this?
There will.
Take it away, Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We'll give a brief presentation about the budget and then open for some questions. So our preliminary budget, as you know, Gilbert is best in class, and we have a number of accolades that we are the 11th-best city for Hispanic entrepreneurs. We're the happiest place, 16th-happiest place to live in America, a top 10 city for retirees. But not only for retirees, we're also the third-best city to buy a family home. So across all of the generations, Gilbert is doing something right. Part of what we do that helps is we do our zero-based budget, where we were able to save about $3 million out of the base budget, moving into fiscal '19, which is a great savings for our residents. As you're also aware of, there were about $24 million of requested needs for the departments across all funds. Only about half of that is recommended for funding in this. So it was a very tight budget year. The requested positions, most of them in the general fund, about 24 of the 26, are public safety, are police officers. We also have some variety of others, gentleman or individual in Public Works to help with our valve exercising, somebody to help time our signals better, a garbage truck driver, and somebody to help test our water. So a lot of things going on in Gilbert. The comparison to last year's budget, very similar, about $1.7 million total difference on the entire budget. We have our capital projects that we've just talked about that makes up about half of our budget. So majority of what we're doing is trying to manage the growth and the infrastructure we need. In the budget, we have included the anticipated revenue from some enterprise fund rate adjustments that is needed, that we are also talking about this evening. The property tax levy included is the $23.25 million. That includes having a $1 million, about $1 million of additional principal that we could pay down and still stay within the $0.3 rate that we had last year, which saves taxpayers about $150,000. So tonight is our prelim budget adoption. It sets the maximum expenditure limit. And then on June 7th would be our final adoption. And thank you to the communication team and their amazing work. This is the first preview of a video that they've put together for us. And I will see if I can get it to play. And depending on outcomes tonight, we'll release that or make adjustments as needed for release next week. Cross your fingers, I'm a number person, not a technology person. Gilbert, Arizona's money management is paying off, literally and figuratively. In 2018, we saved $9 million in interest and paid off $12 million of debt early. We finished construction on the Santan Vista Water Treatment Plant and broke ground on a new parking garage and two new parks. In 2019, Gilbert will continue to budget for smart growth and efficiency. In public safety, Gilbert will see 24 new police officers, and Fire Station 9 will begin operations. Elliott District Park will reopen after extensive renovations. Construction will begin on the Greenfield Wastewater Treatment Plant expansion, and construction will also continue on the Rittenhouse and Gilbert Regional Parks. Gilbert will also be asking for your input on a new public safety training facility, land sale, and an update to the general plan. We will continue to put your tax dollars to work to make Gilbert the best place to live, work, and play. For more information, visit gilbertaz.gov/budget. What a great communication team we have. With that, I'll see if there are any questions from council.
Victor, we're going to let you go first. I mean, Councilmember Peterson.
You can call me Victor. In fact, that's a perfect segue into my opening comment. This will be my last budget cycle with all of you here. And so I mentioned that, for one, to just say thank you for the many years we've worked together. I know I've given everyone a lot of, to think about, and I've also been taught a lot. And so I appreciate the, the years we've spent together. And I also want to apologize. I won't be super long-winded on, on the budget, but I might be a little long on some of the other ones. But I hope to get a little, little deference. This is my last time through all this. And anyway, I just wanted to start, if I can, and I haven't given this, I need to give a whole packet to, to Kelly here. I apologize. Should have had that teed up. But it's actually the second sheet in there, not the first. I got those two reversed. I'm just going to give you my, my annual ongoing general fund, ongoing cost per citizen versus inflation chart. And I enjoyed the, the charts and graphs that I received from Kelly. Holy cow, where there are a lot of them. We had like 40 of them. I cannot compete. But I will say that the particular data that I'm graphing wasn't in there, and maybe that was just because everyone knew I was going to bring this. I don't know. But just also want to reiterate, all these numbers came from staff or out of the, the comprehensive annual financial report, one or the other. Or from, sorry, the Bureau of Labor and Statistics with the CIP numbers, or sorry, the inflation CPI numbers. Anyway, I just wanted to show you where we're at as far as our spending trends. When we talk about ongoing, I just want to reiterate that, first of all, we're just talking general fund. I know there's other, really, we should be looking at more, but I think this is the most dynamic fund, most interesting, and a good indicator of, of other things. So this is just general fund, and it's just ongoing costs. So, and this is based on reporting from, from the staff. So I'm taking staff's word for it. A lot of this I really don't have a good way to prove. And so it is what it is, although I've never seen staff really try and directly lie to me. I'm just saying. They usually give me really good data, so I trust them. But if you look at the gray line there, you can see that's kind of our trajectory. I did the average since about fiscal year 13, and it's about 5% year-over-year trajectory in the budgeted ongoing numbers. The, the brown or orange, or I don't know, I might be colorblind, I'm not sure. I think it's brown or orange line. It represents where we would be going if we were following inflation and population. So keep in mind also, I'm dividing by the, our population. So I'm taking into account growth here. So this is spending per citizen. So that's what that does. And then the blue line is the actual numbers. And I'm admitting, there are some unidentifiable one-time numbers that may be in there, but it is an apples-to-apples year-over-year. You can see all the way since 2001, what I do is I take the total general fund expenditure and subtract capital outlay from that at the end of the year when I get the comprehensive annual financial report. And that trend is actually even steep, steeper. It's about 7.5% year-over-year. And I'll just say, my, my real concern is, you look at the chart from, with the peak at about fiscal year, what, eight there? That's when we had our big budget crunch. The market turned, and we had some hard decisions to make, and it was tough. And we were talking about raising taxes. In fact, the prior council voted, you know, 5 to 2 to raise our sales tax to meet the gap. And so I'm concerned that our, this is an ongoing expenditures. These are not easy. You can't defer these. These don't just disappear. These are things that are very stubborn, stubborn and difficult to deal with. So I just worry that we, yes, in, in these good years, it seems okay. But when the market turns, I think we're going to have some hard decisions to make. So anyway, that's it. That's my spiel. I think overall, we're just, we're off course, and I think we, we need to take some opportunities to change that. So thank you, Mayor, for the time.
Thank you. Any other member of our council? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. Victor, we're going to miss the bread chart. I'm going to miss the bread chart. And here's why, one of the reasons why, because we, you know, we see economies of scale in many sectors. We don't see it in government, and this is the data that proves it, you know, year-over-year. And as we grow, you should be seeing that. You really should. And, you know, the bottom line is, the, the orange line there is, you know, where our spending should track and what the economy will force us to spend or cut back to when the economy rolls over. And it will. I mean, it's, we're just naive to, to believe that it's not going to, to roll over. Right now, you know, the market's been down. It gave all its gains this year away. It's been bullish, you know, the last, or bearish the last month, going sideways, you know, the last couple of weeks. We know the FOMC is going to meet again and likely will raise interest rates again, which means less homes will be purchased, which means less, and a lot of our funds do come off development, right? And when that tapers off, and that's just the, the common consensus of, of economics. And so typically, as we see in this chart, we're going to have to come right back to that line. So when we see such year-over-year large asks for headcount, I mean, that's really what it is. Like right, like this year, I know we need more police, and I do support some of that, but it's a lot. You know, we're, we're asking for more than, than I think that we are trending for right now. You know, we're the safest city in America, and yet we have to have that many more headcount in our police department. So when, when the economy rolls over, it's going to have to come back to that orange line like it did the last two cycles. And so at least that gives us some forecasting of what the cuts are going to be, because likely this budget's going to move forward and, and be supported. But I hope that we'll do more in the way of zero-based budgeting. I know that slide was put up there, but I, I think it's important for citizens to know that in, in 2009, that, that was done through the whole organization. Now it's just done in a fraction of the organization. And there are good savings. I think that's what the savings on that chart showed, that the power of doing that, and how we can find some savings, and we can bend the curve. And my hope, and I'll continue to say, I'd like to see it happen more extensively, because I think there's more savings there that we can redeploy, and more savings that we can pass along to our hard-earned, hard-working taxpayers. So Mayor, it's a little bit too much for me. I'd like to hear other people's, you know, thoughts on, on the opinion, on the, the budget in front of us, but it does seem to be trending in the wrong direction for me at this time. Thank you for the time, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor. Councilmember Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think we can agree that the definition of spending is basically money that's exchanged to purchase services or product. I mean, that's one definition. And I know that when we have two AAA bond ratings from our Finch and Moody organizations, which are really the true financial wizards and watchdogs that we, you know, we go against. And they've reviewed all our books. They go through all the level of detail and so forth. And, you know, even as council, over the last couple of years, you know, I've helped lead some initiatives where we have reduced and eliminated four categories of business taxes. As much as I would have loved to get rid of the bed tax, you know, we had a prudent compromise to be the lowest bed tax here in, in, in the region. The 56-plus million dollars of taxpayer savings due to paying off of bonds and refinancing of bonds has been fantastic. You know, we can go on and on about how fiscally responsible Patrick's organization with the policies that the council has, you know, provided. Hey, Kelly, can you go through some of those 40 slides that I've asked you to make here? I'm sorry, Councilmember Peterson, that I had Kelly do a lot of work here. So the one slide I would like you to bring up, first of all, Kelly, is the one called the all expenditures, inflation adjusted to the $2018, if we can bring that up. And I know some of the council members saw an email about that. So it's this one here that basically is the adopted budget, which shows the actual spend. Perfect. So this is a slide that, you know, I, I shared last year that basically, we don't, you know, I'm not aware of any business or corporation that is measured by the adopted budget. I mean, the adopted budget obviously is a state constitution statute that says we have to set an upper limit. And as I shared before, you know, the blue bars are actually the adopted budgets of the council since 2010. The green bars actually show the actual expenditure that we do from the entire enterprise. I mean, that's globally. That means the general fund as well as the enterprise fund, and I'll go a little bit more detail. But again, if, if we were a big spender, then I guess my expectation would be, like in the fiscal year 2018, we would actually spend the entire blue bar. And that's not what happens here. I mean, we can go through the details of why we do the adopted budget projects that are bidded out, that are three or four years out. We include the full transparency and full disclosure. We include the full transparency and full disclosure to the public of all the things that, you know, we're obligated to. But if you can go to the slide, two slides before, Kelly, and that's the one called the All Expenditure Inflation Adjusted to the 2018. So this was the slide that I wanted to create last year, and so this year, we spent a little time working this out. So again, this is the actual spend of our dollars that any normal business would do. I mean, even your home budgets, you know, these are the actual dollars that we went out to pay for services or product and so forth. And what you'll see here are two lines that I want to share with you. There's a line that's purple, I know it's hard to see, but Kelly's labeled it, called the Population Growth Line. So for 2010 to 2018, you'll see that line at the top of those bars, and that's the actual population growth. Now, the other one I wanted to show here was the trend line of all those years, because I was kind of curious to see if the population is growing at a certain trend, certain rate, or our expenses globally, that means the enterprise and general fund, are we in alignment with the growth? Because as we know, growth pays for growth. That's kind of been some of our policies as we've managed, you know, since I've been on council. And you'll see that those two lines are literally identical. So with this chart, I'm sharing with the public and with the council, when you talk about running a business and you're managing it based upon growth, you couldn't ask for more closer comparison between the growth of our community and how we spend. So I wanted to share that with you. I don't consider that being a big spender. I consider that being very responsible in our numbers. Kelly, if you go to the next slide, which was the one after that, which is the All Expenditure Per Capita. Now, the previous slide was based upon the inflation adjustable rate. I asked Kelly if she can remove the inflational adjustable rate at all these numbers. So these are actual numbers or dollars that we spend every year without any inflation, obviously, this is the actual dollars of each year. And the red line at the very top is the inflation rate for all those years, because I wanted to find out, is our actual spend trend line aligned with the actual inflation? So what you'll see here are literally two lines that are almost running parallel. And that's phenomenal, because to me, that we're spending based upon the growth of our community, based upon our citizens, and we're also spending our monies based upon actual inflation, and you couldn't ask for a well-managed organization. And I just want to share this with the public and with the council, that these are the actual numbers. You couldn't ask for, really, a wonderful operation. And my hat's off to Patrick, because when we started this whole process back in 2010, one of the reasons why we hired Patrick was to execute on this level of, you know, control of our government. And as we have talked about converting local government to run like a billion-dollar corporation, I mean, this is it. This is phenomenal. So anyways, thank you, Kelly, for sharing that with the public.
Thank you, Councilmember Cook. Councilmember Ray, did you want to add anything?
Thank you, Mayor.
Hot mic.
I apologize. I will be very grateful. This is a preliminary budget. I suspect that there may be some changes between now and the end. I appreciate staff's unwillingness to continue to work with us and talk with us and spend significant amounts of time. I look forward to continued discussions on this, but I appreciate what's been done thus far.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Vice Mayor Peterson or Councilmember Anderson?
Just very quickly, Kelly, we've had 8% growth in revenues year-over-year for the last three years, I think it's been. Is that correct?
In sales tax, the current fiscal year will be the fifth year in a row that we've had 8% year-over-year sales tax growth, yes. That's tremendous.
Can we do any kind of projections into the future on that, knowing that, as Councilmember Taylor said, that there may be slow times? How do we plan for that?
So in the fiscal '19 budget, we've actually only anticipated a 3% increase in our sales tax. So if we get more than that, which we anticipate we will and we would hope to see, then we would recognize that in fiscal '19 when we're building the fiscal '20 budget as one-time money and be able to use it for that. But that gives us some cushion or protection against changes in the economy, or recognition that as our base continues to grow, that it's more difficult to do 8% every year.
Thank you. Do we do any research on cost per capita in other communities or in the county that compares to what Councilmember Peterson's showing us here?
Not that I can think of off the top of my head.
Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, the city of Tempe does an annual cost of service analysis every year that they do. I've not seen their latest one, but we have consistently come in as the lowest total combined cost per service every year that I've been here.
That's what I thought, that in the region, we consistently come in lower than, I'm sure, than many of the other communities around us. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Cook's comments, just briefly, to explain how the two data sets actually do coincide very well. Can you, Kelly, just one more time, pull up the Inflation Adjusted, I think it was, All Expenditures. Was the second the last one you showed? I can't remember all the names. It's all green, though. Yeah, that one. So I don't have a contention with the trend line, you're right, over that time period. And I haven't, I actually voted for that budget, I think, in 2013. You'll remember, that was the last time I did it. And so the reason that trend line is so in line is because it includes four years that actually the trend goes the opposite direction. So, yeah, as an average, that's correct. But if you took a trend line starting in 2013 forward, you'd see that we are very much not on track. And so I do appreciate the slide. It's the same data I'm using, there are just different ways of reporting it, and I just wanted to point that out. There's no debate here on the actual data. We're all using the same numbers, it's just how we report it and process it. Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson, with all due respect, I've been here for a long time, and not one time have you voted in favor of a budget. Let's look back, we'll look back, we'll have the data pulled.
I promise you, I did.
It'll be a fun, it'll be a fun history lesson for all of us. I also just wanted to take note that, actually, it wasn't until 2011 that we started zero-based budgeting in the town of Gilbert. That was actually the first year that we did that with Dawn Irvine as our budget director. For the first couple of years, we did the entire organization every year and realized some of the strain and stress that was putting on the organization, as well as sort of inhibiting our ability to do some projections. And so we have moved to doing a third of the organization every year, and I think that system is working out better for us, especially from a ROI perspective with the quantity of personnel that we have. And I saw your budget team here. Yes, I do. You guys are awesome. They're doing the work of three people. There are probably two really incredible, capable people doing the work of three people. It's pretty amazing what you've been able to produce, Kelly, not only the documents, but also working with our entire executive team to develop the budget. I see a group of, I think, college or high school, I might be, you guys are kind of far away, and my vision's starting to go, high school? High school students here. This is a very interesting look at how we can all look at the same numbers and see things very differently. I look at these numbers, and I am thrilled that with the growth of our community, with the quantity of projects that we've been able to provide, with the service levels, best-in-class service levels, time and time again, with the number of accolades that we have as a community, that we're still the second-safest community in the country, even without all of the public safety personnel that we need in order to backfill some of the retirements that are coming as well. We're building a fire station, we're building two parks, we are continuing to maintain levels of service, we're looking at a Lindsay 202 interchange project, we're constantly, through our CIP team, our engineering team, building and constructing new roads. We are moving Gilbert forward every single day, and it is an important effort to prepare, not only for today, but also for the future of our community. I always say this, maybe the council's tired of it, but we are not good leaders if we are not looking out five, 10, 15 years. And so I am constantly looking for, here we are today, where do we want to be tomorrow? What do we need to be doing in order to get there? And I think this budget falls exactly in line with the values of this community and also with the end in mind, beginning with the end in mind and how important that is. So to our entire executive team and all of the employees who worked tirelessly to put this together, it's been referred to as a Hunger Games-type process in order to get to this point. I think they work incredibly hard to bring to this town council the absolute best, and I am grateful for that. I know there's been a ton of work with all the council members behind the scenes to have input and say into this, and I just want to reiterate that I am extremely proud of the team that we have here, but also, more importantly, really proud of the direction that we're going as a community. So thank you, Patrick, to you and to all of your team. Anyone else want to?
Ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion.
Mayor, I would like to move that we approve agenda item 24.
Second. Please vote, Councilmember Ray. That motion carries with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. That moves us to agenda item 25, the first hearing regarding our 2019 property tax levy. Amy, I thought you were going to present on the property tax levy. I was going to think, way to share the... Kelly, are you presenting to us on this item?
Mayor, council, I'm happy to speak to it. As we've talked about in the presentation earlier, the proposed property tax rate that would cover our debt service and be able to do $1 million of additional principal would keep our tax rate at $1.03. That's the same as we have it in fiscal '18, and that is the proposed rate that has been noticed and that would, staff would recommend.
Thank you, Kelly. I think I heard that Councilmember Peterson wants to talk for a really long time on this agenda item, so perhaps we will... That makes me a little bit sad, it's your last one.
Wow, thank you.
Just a little bit.
It's balanced by some other feelings. Got it. Thank you. All right. If you can put up my slide, the property tax levy, existing versus new. Mayor, I think the next two items really best illustrate my point on the spending. We're about to have a 180 on our message. Our message is about to go completely the opposite direction. We're going to act like money is so tight, we have to raise the tax levy. We're going to act like money's so tight, we have to raise rates. But a few minutes ago, money was not tight, everything's perfect, everything's fine. I'm sorry, that's a little hyperbole, but I'm just saying, it's not, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense. If we've got the money, by all means, let's, don't raise taxes. So, and I disagree, Mayor, and I do so respectfully, but I very much disagree with the argument that because the rate, I don't know, so it's a rate we don't even set, so first of all. But that rate, really, if you'll notice my chart, actually, last, let's review a little history first. In fiscal year, oh my goodness, we're missing charts or data here, but fiscal year '17 will be the second bar over there. That one, we actually did have an increase on existing residents, and it was 5.229%. Now, the rate everyone else keeps talking about is really a tool of the assessor so he can collect the right amount for us to pay our, well, whatever levy we set, okay? So, but as far as existing property owners, their taxes went up 5.229%. The next year, we had a bit of, that's last year, we had a knock-down drag-out, and there was a bit of a compromise. Originally, it was going to go up more like 4% on existing residents, and we ended up with about a little less than a percent. So now, with the proposed new one, and this is all cumulative, so the proposed would be a 4.8% increase on existing residents. So cumulatively, with all those prior increases, we'd be over 10% over those three years. That's how much more the average property owner would pay in taxes on their, at least their Gilbert secondary property tax portion of their tax bill. And so I totally disagree that it's not a tax increase. It is a tax increase, we have to notice it as a tax increase. We're adopting a levy tonight. And so we're not adopting a rate, we're adopting a levy. I'm sorry, we're setting a preliminary limit on the levy, excuse me, you're right. But we could set that limit lower to keep the tax down. Now, what I'm going to suggest is an option that's not up there, but all we need to meet our debt service obligation is, excuse me, where's my number, $630,000 more than what we taxed last year. And keep in mind, with the levy last year being $21.65 million, and again, I'm suggesting we don't increase that. I'm suggesting we adopt the same levy as last year. We only need $630,000 to make up the difference between our obligation and last year's levy. So we could keep the levy the same, not increase taxes, not notice an increase, and I'll tell you where we'll get it from. We have lots of leftover money in capital projects, a lot. And so I can guarantee you, there'll be a lot more than $600,000 left over next year in general fund capital projects. And so I'm going to move that we reallocate some from there to make up that shortfall, and then there's no tax increase by anybody's measure. I don't know who could claim one at that point. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Before you make a motion, though, is there anybody else that wants to speak on the secondary property tax levy?
Mayor, thank you. You know, Councilmember Peterson made a couple of important points. We heard from Kelly that she doesn't expect to have 3%, but more like 6, 8, whatever we've been trending. So the point's already been made that we're going to have the money to keep taxes low. I have already made the point that we've inflated some CIP numbers. So I just feel it's important that if, we need to pay for what we need, and I don't disagree with the points that are made, that we have a beautiful community and we should pay for a beautiful community. We want that, that's why we moved to Gilbert, but we don't need to overpay for it, we don't need to overtax people for it. At least that's my opinion. So I think the proposal that Councilmember Peterson is making is very reasonable, given the historical facts, the overinflation of some CIP numbers, the more rosy projections of the budget forecasts. So I think we need to be consistent, one way or the other, and I think that's a very reasonable proposal that's in front, and I'd be happy to second that when that is made. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Kelly, let's get to slide 20 and so forth to do here. If you could do me a favor and bring up the Maricopa County Historical Property Tax Rate and Levy for me. What I wanted to share with the council and the public here is, you know, since we've been on council, what I wanted to show was another governing body that we all pay taxes to, are all part of Maricopa County. And what I wanted to share with you here, most recently, I was at a Maricopa County Republican meeting, and one of the supervisors was basically sharing with the other Republicans there how fiscally responsible they are by keeping the rate flat. And everyone started clapping. And I said, well, that's pretty amazing, because I don't think they've seen all the data. And what I want to share here is, as we see the county has, you know, increased their levy, you know, pretty much since 2013... levy, you know, pretty much since 2013, 2014, 2015, 2016, 2017, 2018, and the rate has increased alongside of that. So I know that we have a lot of passionate folks that like to, you know, take the microscope and look at a lot of the Gilbert details, but I just share this with the public that, you know, maybe there are other areas that we can look at as well. Kelly, could you also bring up the Gilbert historical? And what I wanted to share with you, as you look at the levy increases for Gilbert, it pretty much almost kind of aligns with the county. I mean, they got the same type of shape from, you know, from 2011 through, you know, 2018. But the difference is, you can see our rate line is going in the other direction, where the county was going and increasing, ours was going down. Now, we can all agree that, you know, these would be still considered a tax increase, even though our rate was going down, but I would say that the other team is probably collecting a lot more money and so forth. Kelly, can you do me a favor? Can you bring up the Cook... This is the Cook House Historical Property Tax Levy. I had to share this with you because I wanted to find out... It wasn't not... That wasn't in your packet? Well, I'm sorry. Well, what I wanted to do was, you know, since I voted for the... I voted for these levies, I got to see how much pain it caused the Cook family here. So, this is a home I've lived in for about 22 years. It's, you know, Councilmember Ray thinks I live in the ghetto part of Gilbert. I don't know where he got that from. I think it's the best part of Gilbert in a lot of ways. But anyways, it's a home that has five bedrooms. It's almost 3,000 square feet. We've been there for 22 years. I mean, raised our five children. We have two grandchildren, one on the way. So it's... I have 20 rose bushes I love in my backyard, and my wife loves those flowers, and it's just been fantastic. But anyways, I voted for these levies, and I just wanted to share this with you because if you go from the year 2015 to 2016, the increase to my taxes was only $12. And when we go from 2016 to 2017, it was another $12. Then we lowered the tax rate, and then from 2017 to 2018, it was $5. And then, of course, we kept it flat. Coming this year, I anticipate I'll be paying another $12. So I just wanted to just share, you know, what that number is as it relates to the, you know, the burden on the Cook family as it relates to, you know, the tax levy increase. Kelly, can you do me a quick favor? And I also, Councilmember Peterson, I have a proposal. You may like this, but I want to share... Can you go to the chart? Now, there we go. Beautiful. So the second line in bold is the proposed tax levy that we're considering. But the one piece of information that wasn't shared, that I want to share with everybody here, is that currently, there are no... I mean, the secondary property tax is all about paying for taxpayer-approved bonding and debt. So the taxpayer approved and voted for this and have authorized for the town to use those bonds. And right now, there are no more dollars left to take from any bond because we've now taken all of it and we're using it. So right now, the second line is about, you know, the staff is saying, "Hey, we like to keep the same rate." But by keeping the same rate, we're asking the public, maybe, that we're going to actually get about $1 million from that, and that $1 million is going to go to the principal. Now, the principal's about $16 million. So if we keep the rate the same, we get $1 million more, we pay to the principal, and guess what? The taxpayer is going to save $150,000 of interest that we didn't have to pay for the life of that bond. Now, I almost think that's a kind of a pretty good deal if we are happy of keeping our rate at $1.03. We collect $1 million more than what we really need, but then we turn it around to the principal, and we save $150,000. I think that's fantastic. Now, I also, the third line is like, well, what happens if we want to collect $2 million? And the rate would go up to $1.07. And then if we take the $2 million from $1.07 and we pay off the principal, then we're going to have the taxpayer save about $300,000. Again, I think it's fantastic that we can actually take a little extra money, you know, to pay down the principal. Now, I went for the worst case, which is the fourth line, and that would be, what happens if we want to pay the complete debt in one year? That's a $16 million principal paid down, but the rate would go to $1.70. And I'm not sure the public is okay with $1.70 because that chart I showed you with the Cook family, well, that $12 is going to obviously go a little higher, and that may not be so, I don't know, appetizing to the Cook family. But here's my proposal. And I think it really is about what does the public really believe is the right thing to do? Now, I shared with everybody that if we do a little bit more, we collect a little bit more money, then we can apply it to the principal, and guess what? We get some savings back from interest payments that we don't have to pay. But my proposal is this: if we do nothing, where we're trying to save the taxpayer any money by trying to pay off the principal, and if the public is, you know, in agreement with this, that we're not wanting to pay down that principal, because I know as a loan owner, that I'd like to pay the principal off as fast as I can because I know there's savings, we can have the rate or the levy set at $22,300,000, and that makes the rate 99 cents. Now, I'm good with that. I could live with that number. But I just ask the council and the public, what would be the nicer thing to do? Do we want to do the $1.03, collect the million and pay off the principal and save $150,000? Or do we keep it at 99 cents and we're not going to save $150,000? Or we're not going to save $300,000? So I just share that with the public because, like I said, I'm okay to keeping it at 99 cents. Going from $1.03 to 99 cents, I prefer the $1.03. But again, I just share that with you. I think this data is accurate, Kelly, as we went through it, and I now share that with the council for their opinion on my chart.
Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I just want to say that I appreciate all the detail that is shared this evening by our staff and by our council members. I think that it shows that everybody has such a vested interest in this community that they take the time to take these numbers, create this information, to share with all of us. This sheet's my favorite. For many reasons, Councilmember Cook, I think it's very straightforward. It's very easy to understand. It really just puts it plain and simply in black and white. I mean, that's how it's presented, but that's really how it's shown here. I appreciate the work that you went to, and I know Kelly helped, of course. She does so much. She definitely deserves all the credit. And from my perspective, I'd rather see us being able to pay down the debt and save the interest and stick with the same recommended 1.03. That's my perspective. I can listen to other conversation, other arguments, other discussion on it and see where the council would like to go, but I just wanted to make those couple of comments.
Councilmember Anderson.
I trust Kelly's opinion on these things. Could you comment on some of this discussion we're having, Kelly?
Certainly. Mayor, council...
Are you saying that you don't trust my explanation here? The two is too flowery or something?
Mayor, council...
I'm sure your heart's in it.
As staff, we would recommend doing the $1.03. That would help keep the stability in the tax rate for the taxpayers, but also have a wonderful opportunity to pay down some debt early, which we don't always have, but we happen to have some debt that is callable at this time, and so we have an opportunity that we can take advantage of.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ray, did you want to add anything?
Thank you, Mayor. I haven't seen the graphs that Councilman Cook put up, but I'm sure they were very colorful. But I... We had the same discussion in recent tax levy discussions of, do we want to pay down debt or not? And it wasn't long ago that we made the decision to keep the levy a little bit higher so we could help pay down that principal quicker. At my house, and I'm sure most people's houses, if we have debt, we pay it down as quick as possible. And so I lean towards the $1.03, but I understand the 99 cents for Councilmember Cook, and we'll save a million... We'll pay down $1 million in principal, we'll save $150,000 in interest. It'll cost the average resident $5 to $7 more, and they will end up saving about $8.50 based on the savings. And so I guess my point is, I'm open to either one. I would prefer to pay down debt quicker, and it's not like as soon as we pay this debt down, all of a sudden we can go out for more... We can apply for more debt immediately on these same bonds. If the voters approve additional bonds in the future, that's different, but it's not something where if we hurry and pay this off, we can quickly get more debt based on that. So I think I'm inclined today to go with the $1.03 and then talk more about going down to 99 cents because, obviously, we're putting the high limit on today, the highest limit it can be. But I absolutely recognize the 99 cent comment, and if that's what we think the residents would prefer, to pay a little bit less and to pay more in the long run, I'm open to do that. I'm not sure that's the best financial decision.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. If I could just respond to the proposal, and I think it's great. So I just want to make sure that we know that we're not in a dichotomy here, right? There's not just two choices here, right? Because with all the charts going up, what we've already proven from the charts is that by actually lowering the levy and therefore the rate, with a strong economy, we have been actually strengthening credit. We have been refunding. So that's actually already been occurring with a levy at the current rate or even below because levy went up already. So it's not as if that we can't do this. So I want to make sure that this narrative that there's only one way to pay down principal because history's already shown, we have been refunding, and there's been some excellent savings, and Kelly's team has done some excellent work on that. Just recently, we've seen a $20 million refund at lower rates. So that's why I'm comfortable knowing that the CIP does have a lot of padding. We can carve out that $600,000 fairly easily because, for me, the bottom line is, we should only take what we actually need, and we all agree we want good quality. And I'm convinced because the data shows that we can still continue to refund and pay down the principal because that's what we've been doing, and so I don't think we need to raise it just to do that because we're already doing it at the lower take. So that's my comment. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing for additional time.
Jordan, we're just going to need you to speak up.
I will talk loud.
Thank you.
So to Councilmember Taylor's comment, he's absolutely correct that we have lower debt by refinancing, by paying back early, et cetera, and all of that's absolutely accurate. And I have the utmost confidence in our leadership and budget team that that will continue. But, not but, in addition to that, we will do that no matter what the rate is, no matter what the levy is. If we had the $1.03 levy, we could do it even quicker. And so I agree with everything that Jared said, but I want to make sure that the perception is not there that by paying this $1 million early does not mean that we can't do other things. It's just, it's additional. And the same with our home finances. We do a lot of things to save money, and if we can pay down debt in multiple ways faster, we want to do that. So I agree with Jared. There are lots of ways of paying this down, and my end goal is to get rid of the debt as fast as possible. And so I appreciate staff, the executive team, and the budget team for working so hard on this for so long.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, thank you for just one last chance to address this. I understand the argument about saving the interest. However, I think that it's more of a carrot-on-a-stick argument. And the reason I say that is I have found opportunities, delayed projects, or found savings, or whatever, and every time I do that, there's something else that fills it in. And what's really going to happen here is the 1.03 is going to be the new lid that we've put on this thing, and if we save that, all that's going to do is give us room for more debt. And, you know, and whether or not that's needed, I don't always know. A lot of times, I disagree. But that's going to be the new lid, and everyone is hanging on this whole rate idea, and so that's going to be the new lid on things, okay? So the savings will never really translate. You know, that principal saved is never going to really translate. It's just going to create more room under that rate for more debt. And so the other... Let's go back to... Can we go back to the Cook household? I love that. That was really cool. Purple, a good color, too. It's great. But this proves the point, okay? This is a tax increase. Now, how big of a tax increase? Okay, we can argue how big is too big. We can. But this is a great illustration of the fact that that tax, what he pays in his property taxes, going up year after year after year after year. Now, is that too much in one year? I mean, I don't know. How much is too much? What is the line you shouldn't cross? Now, a lot of people on the council will say the rate. Well, I'm sorry, the rate is multiplied by a valuation that the assessor sets that actually often gets rebutted. In fact, there are many, many cases. They get taken legal action against, and they concede, and they adjust their values down. It happens all the time. This is not like set in stone. So there's nothing magical about that rate. There's really not. What's real is what people actually have to pay out of their pockets, and that's shown here. And that's going up little by little, and we're cooking that frog one degree at a time. That's what's happening. And, you know, we don't have... I think we draw the line on what we're responsible for, which is the levy. That's what we adopt. We don't adopt a rate. We adopt a levy. So we should stop it at that. At the very least, we should do something like maybe adjust for inflation or figure out what new rooftops we could maybe look at, just allowing for the new valuation of the new rooftops. I can do all those calculations, but just to simply say the rate is a very bad methodology, in my opinion.
Mayor, thank you. I just have one clarification. The secondary property tax that we see here only pays for the debt that is voter-approved. We're not adding any more council debt to this, and I don't anticipate this happening right now, but again, it's voter-approved debt. So when we go out to, you know, a vote to the public and we say we have a big project that's related to streets or water treatment, whatever that might be, we go to the voter. The voters either say yes or no. If they say yes, Kelly's team is going to come back with a new number because we have to pay that debt off, and it's going to adjust the levy, and the rate will change. But again, the voter's approved of that, and I just want to make that clear, that that's what happened.
You guys are good. I think it's really important to note that every single member of this council is a fiscal conservative, even if we see things a little bit differently, and I think that's a really important aspect of this. What we haven't really discussed is that the reason the amount the Cook family is paying every year is going up is not because of the rate change. It's not even because of the levy change. It's not even because of the levy change. It is because your property values are going up, right, Councilmember Cook? Your house is worth more today than it was in 2011, and that is done by the county assessor's office. So the county assessor will assign a maximum of 5% increase in your property valuation, and that property valuation becomes the number that is used to calculate your property tax, your secondary property tax that the town is paying. We have a whole video on this online, so you can really understand how this works and why it works this way. It's very clear, very quick and easy, lots of information in video about how we do budgets and why we do budgets the way that we do them. You cannot, as a council, applaud, high-five, pat yourself on the back. Whatever you do, when we pay down debt, saving taxpayers' interest money and principal by either refinancing or paying off debt early, which we have all applauded ourselves, no? Yes, we have all applauded ourselves, and obviously the team, for bringing it to our attention. You cannot applaud that action and at the same time call your fellow council members fiscally irresponsible by adopting a levy like this. You cannot do both at the same time. It's absolutely counterproductive to do that. So I appreciate all the dialogue that has gone thus far. I do think we'll probably go for a vote at this point, but if you're gonna pat yourself on the back for saving taxpayers millions of dollars, then you're also gonna be supporting this effort. And this is a responsible way for us to move forward. Again, not thinking about Gilbert today or tomorrow, we're thinking about Gilbert five, 10, 15, 20 years ahead. That is what a responsible leader will do, and this is a responsible amount for us to be not adopting tonight, but to be recommending, I guess, hearing, ordinance setting, whatever. I know we have a lot of those things. Okay, so we will call for a motion at this point.
Jen, Mayor Daniel?
Yeah.
I apologize for calling Jen.
Jen is good.
One quick comment, and you mentioned this at the very end briefly, but this is setting the limit, this is not the actual adoption. So things can change between now and June 7.
Correct. The adoption will be June 7. Okay. Victor, I think you do have a motion.
I do.
Okay.
Mayor, because this is preliminary, I'm gonna go for Councilmember Cook's compromise, and I will move to approve the preliminary levy with the total amount being $22 million...22.3 million.
Mayor, is that what your proposal was? I thought it was the second line.
Well, again, what I would say is, you could...I'm open to doing the 0.99, no doubt about it. But again, I would like to have, as Councilmember Ray said, let's have further discussion, because I think the public may, or others may say, going to the $0.03, collecting the million dollars, applying it to the principal would save $150,000. So I would say, you know, I'm more in favor of maybe at least setting it at $103. Let's have further discussion for the 0.99. But again, I'm open for the 0.99 as well.
Right, thank you, Mayor. Then I'll second the 22.3 motion on the dais.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. That would make it so that we weren't allowed to have the other conversation, though, on the 7th, and you're aware of that.
And I want to amend that motion so that we can have that discussion, and I would like to amend the motion that we set the levy at $23,250,000 to allow us to have the discussion, so when we come back in June, we can have a further discussion on lowering that if needed.
I'll second that amendment.
We have a motion and a second on the amendment. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion carries with a 5-2 vote, so now we need to vote on the amended motion, so it's on the language that Councilmember Cook just gave us. Please vote.
Aye.
And you're doing it again, because that's the amended motion. That motion carried...you said...okay. We will reconsider that vote. Can't vote...well, you can, but...vote against your own motion? All right. The board's been cleared. Jordan, we'll need you to vote as well by acclamation on the amended motion that Councilmember gave us the language for.
This is Councilmember Cook's amended motion, correct?
Sorry, yes. Did I say Ray? I meant Cook.
Aye.
5-2 vote. Thank you. We will recess the special meeting and reconvene in regular meeting. We have some administrative items. Unlike the state legislature, we will not be adjourning at 5:00 in the morning tomorrow. We are going to be efficient about this.
I'm Eric Brown, I'm the Water Resource Manager for the Town of Gilbert. Tonight, this Agenda Item 26 is the Notice of Intent to Raise Rates and Fees for the Town's Enterprise Funds, the water, wastewater, reclaimed water, and Environmental Services trash funds. This is a state-required portion of the process, much like you just went through. I can't promise it'll go as fast as Kelly just went through, but you have seen many of these rates slides before, but we thought it would be beneficial to show them in the public council meeting. As a reminder, these are the four utilities that we're up for discussion. This is a graph that shows the change in CPI since our last increase on any of these utilities in 2009. You'll notice 16.3% is the CPI. Water and wastewater rates have been unchanged in that time period, and Environmental Services rates actually decreased in 2009. Our water fund, on this graph, we show the fund balance, the minimum fund balance in red, the actual fund balance if no action is done, and the fund balance at the end of the five-year period if the recommended change of 11.5% on water rates is implemented. The wastewater fund, we have those same items that are shown there. At the end of the five-year period, our minimum fund balance will still be met with the recommended 9.25% rate increase. On the Environmental Services Residential Fund, we had a discussion about removing some items that are currently paid for out of the Environmental Services Residential Fund relating to environmental compliance programs, and council gave direction for us to remove those out of the Environmental Services Residential Fund and put them into a new fee that is out in front for our customers, and that is part of the recommendation. The slide shows that the Environmental Services Residential Fund will be at minimum fund balance by removing those items and implementing the fee. We will actually be recommending a decrease on the residential environmental services fee because of this. On the commercial side, environmental services, we are recommending an 8.4% increase to make sure that the revenue and expenditures are balanced at the end of every year. As always, we like to talk about what is actually driving these rate increases. There have been increases on our raw water costs of 58% since 2009. We've got growth in plant expansions that we're funding. Chemicals and material costs continue to rise, and asset maintenance, while in the long run, that does reduce costs. In the short term, there's a little bit of additional cost as you ramp those up. However, there have been quite a few downward rate pressures as well. We have been...we have insourced certain maintenance on our water fire hydrants at a lower cost, which has saved greatly for our ratepayers. As we already have heard tonight, lower interest rates and increased credit rating have saved on our debt servicing, and we've adopted technology that has increased staff efficiency, both on the water and the wastewater side, as well as on the environmental services. We would like to discuss the five principles that we guided our thought process of customer service, financial sufficiency to operate without subsidy, equity among our customer classes, promoting efficient use of these resources, and maintaining a simplicity of You will recall that our water fees are based on two items. There is a flat fee based on the meter size, that's a monthly fee, and then there is also a volumetric fee based on the amount of water use. We're recommending to increase these base fees by the amount listed in the third column, the difference there for some of these, based on the meter size. And then on the volumetric side, for the residential structure, we're recommending moving the first tier to be a little bit smaller to line up with current indoor residential water use, down to the 8,000 gallon mark, and then adjusting the actual rates for each of the inclining block tiers to make up a difference. We always like to compare ourselves to our neighbors to see how we are doing in cost of service, and on the water bill side, we're very, very competitive. On the non-residential indoor water use, these are our commercial customers. Currently, they are following the residential inclined block structure, and as we've discussed before, we are proposing to make it a flat rate to line up with the third tier for the residential side of $1.60 for that indoor water use. For the landscape, we're proposing to make that as well a flat rate that lines up with the residential top tier for landscape water use, $2.06 per 1,000 gallons. Our water hydrants have a separate rate, and these are for large construction projects, grading, and they have got a much higher impact on our system, and so through cost of service analysis, we are recommending $8.02 per 1,000 gallons, volumetric rate. Moving over to the wastewater side, currently on our residential side, we have got a base rate of $15.90, and then a variable rate per 1,000 gallons of actual water consumption based on a winter average. We have recognized that for the residential side, it's really an on or off. Either you have the service or you don't. There's not a lot of difference between how much water you put down the drain, because there's not a lot of variation on the residential side. So to eliminate any variability, we're proposing a flat fee of $24.73 for the residential Contrast that with our non-residential side. Currently, we do not have a base fee, and there is a variable rate of $1.99 per 1,000 gallons of consumption on the non-residential side. So there are customers out there that have access to our sewer that pay less than $4 a month for that access, and we recognize that that is not equitable either. And so we are proposing a base rate of $16.64 for our non-residential customers, and then because we are able to collect some more revenue on the base fee, we're actually going to reduce the variable rate. So our higher users are actually probably going to see a little bit of a benefit from Our customers see the wastewater bill for 6,000 gallons, which is a pretty typical use for a resident. You can see that we're still very competitive right in the middle of all of our baseline cities around us. Now, of course, they don't actually look at the bill like that, they look at it as the combined bill. And when you combine water and wastewater, Gilbert still maintains the lowest rates of our comparison cities. The reclaimed water side, we're recommending to leave the base rate, the base monthly fee, the same, at $15, but we have got three separate rates based on the type of service that our customers receive from us. The customers that receive the direct reclaimed water through our purple pipes from our water reclamation facility, we're recommending an increase up to 40 cents per 1,000 gallons. For customers who have a recovery well but utilize Gilbert's long-term storage credits to recover that water, we are proposing an 80-cent volumetric rate. And for customers who use a town-owned well, where we do all the maintenance and operations on that well, we're proposing $1.34 per 1,000 gallons. On the Environmental Services Residential side, we've already had a slight discussion about removing those environmental compliance programs from that fund and paying for them separately. The fee that we are recommending for all customers, we have it on the residential side, but for all customers, is $4.28 per month to pay for those federally mandated environmental compliance programs. There's a corresponding reduction of $1.20 for the residential side, and so you could see at the bottom, the total rate and fee for the residents will increase to $19.08 per month. As you can see, we're still very competitive with our neighbors. The environmental compliance programs are taking a new tact. A lot of cities are now recognizing that they need to do some stormwater maintenance, and they need to find a source of revenue for it. And while I...we found some comparison cities, these are not always apples to apples, because we have different environmental requirements, as well as the fact that most of these cities do not actually fully fund these programs from their fees. We recommend doing this. That's why our fee might be a little bit higher. On the non-residential side, you'll recognize these two bins, you've probably seen them around. On the left, we're talking about the dumpster service, and on the right side, the roll-offs. It's a very busy graph. There are various sizes of those dumpsters, three yards, up to eight yards, and then depending on the business, they collect them multiple times per week, and we have got different rates. These rates were reconstructed in a way to identify the actual cost of that service as it aligns with today's costs. And we recognize that some...most businesses have more than one dumpster, and the cost for us to service that second, or third, or fourth additional dumpster is actually less, and so we've calculated those rates for the additional container onsite as well. And then for the roll-offs, our cost to dispose of the material is our cost to dispose of it, and it stays the same, and the collection is what has changed. And so you'll see the corresponding proposed rate changes here. Now, this is the second step. We came to you on March 2nd and discussed these rate changes. Today, we're proposing the Notice of Intent to raise the fees throughout June, and, well, I should mention, we are developing the website. It goes live on Monday, assuming approval tonight. With the written report will be filed on the website as well. We will publish the Notice of Intent in the newspaper in June, and we're going to have public outreach meetings June 26th and July 17th for our residential and non-residential customers as well. I see a question already?
I was just gonna throw something out, because Kelly and I talked about this a little bit when I did my budget one-on-one with her. We may want to adjust this. I worry about the quantity of citizens that are gone during June and July, our hot summer months. And August 2nd, school has just barely started, like within that week, and it may be just too critical of a time. So I would like to explore maybe lengthening this timeframe just a little bit to have that a little bit more public comment, maybe public interest, let's call it.
Okay.
When it's really hot, people aren't thinking about how much water they're using, they just need to drink and swim.
That's when they should be, though, Mayor.
It's when...I know. It's just when they drink more and swim, so...
Okay, so with that, given that, the timeline, there will be a public hearing at some point in the late summer, and then possible council adoption following that. And then we will have the rates be... And then, we will have the rates be effective no earlier than 30 days after that. I mentioned the website. It's gilbertaz.gov/utilityrates. We have got customer buttons on there for residential, non-residential customers as well. There will be a bill calculator, so customers can see the changes. We are doing bill stuffers with the dates of these workshops, as well as, once council adopts rate changes, we will do an additional bill stuffer so that folks know when to expect them to change. And that's it for now. Questions, comments?
Eric, thank you. Great presentation, lots of really good information for the public there. On that webpage, will someone that want to provide feedback be able to do that through the website, or is it just at the forums, or maybe, could you explain a little bit more how residents following this topic might be able to provide feedback?
We've provided a very specific email. It is mine, and so I will be receiving all of our customer comments, and I will compile them. They will also have the opportunity at the workshops to provide written comments, as well as, of course, discussion comments. So we'll be annotating those so that we can give council feedback along the way.
Thank you.
Quick question. You mentioned in the slide that there was some efficiency savings from applying technology. What metrics do we have to kind of illustrate those?
The specific one that we have annotated is the use of some tablet technology in the field for some of our wastewater folks, which means that they're able to accomplish some of their tasks a lot quicker, and which means that we, in the past, would have had to add additional staff, and we've been able to avoid adding that additional staff as we try to meet those compliance needs.
Am I going to continue with my comments now? Okay. I'm gonna jump right into my comments on that note. I'm a little confused with that, and you don't have to sit, well, I do need a slide up if you can see the water production slide. Put that up there, that'd be great. So I'm gonna, while they're doing that, I'm gonna talk about, I'll be as brief as I can. I am very passionate about this item. I've spent probably 20 hours just studying this one item. I'm not kidding. There's a lot of data, there's a lot to talk about, a lot to think about, and honestly, I still have questions, and I'm sure there's things that I still need to learn. But, just by category, I'm gonna talk about commercial trash rates. That is the one that I give my stamp of approval on. You know why? Because it's optional. Nobody has to take commercial trash. They don't have to pay for commercial trash. If we're not doing a good job, we're not providing value, they don't have to use us. And not only am I okay with the full cost recovery and raising the rate to accomplish that, I would insist that we do so. So, thank you, perfect. I think that's right on the money. That's where my excitement dies a little bit. Residential trash. This new fee is not a fee, in my opinion. It is a tax. And the reason I say that, it has nothing to do with use, has nothing to do with your use of trash service. It doesn't, in my opinion, does not belong in the trash department at all. And if you live here, you're gonna pay it. It is a tax levied on you, living here, period. That is what it is. So, to make it some kind of a user fee based on what you use and don't use, I think is completely, is wrong. And that's probably why we have other communities that don't get full cost recovery out of it, because they recognize it's not really a user fee. This is something else, okay? Yeah, it's sad that the federal government's done that to us. We have to have some taxes to pay for it. I see that, but it's a tax. It's not a fee. And so, I don't agree with putting it in here at all, so I don't agree with that. Now, water and wastewater, that's why I put my slide up here. I was trying to understand, you know, how are we doing? And really, I just picked the most obvious metric I could find. I didn't even have the time to cherry pick, trust me. I did not cherry pick anything. I found the most obvious metric that's in our budget book as a metric of performance, and has been there since 1998, okay? In terms of water production. And that's simply the million gallons per day average that we had across any given year, okay? And so, I compared that to, and I was trying to be very fair and specific, I just compared it to the staff in water production, okay? Trying to be fair. How much water we produce, just the staff in water production, and again, that's been a very consistent department, was really nice, because it was very consistent over the years. We've shifted things around. I tried to do the whole water department, but we've had people added and moved, and it was too confusing. But that seemed appropriate. So when I graphed the data out, I just, I didn't think it would be right to take the highest point. I took the average of our three best years, okay? Because I didn't want to get some outlier that was too crazy. And the average million gallons per day per employee, so this is output per employee, okay? Was 1.583. So I compared that to our most recent three years average, which is .971. I'm thinking, why in the world are we producing so much less per full-time employee than we used to? Why? That's a 39% decrease in output per full-time employee in the water production area. Now, I couldn't do every metric for every sub, you know, category, but if you apply this kind of, if you look at this as opportunity for saving, what that would translate to across the department is $3.6 million, $3.7 million per year. If we were able to just recover or reclaim the efficiency we used to have in terms of output per employee, so that was that.
Quick question on that, if that's okay? Is that okay that I interrupt you? Because I have a quick question on that. Does that include the cost of the water?
No, because this isn't about cost of water. This is about output per employee. So it has nothing to do with cost of water, has everything to do with the cost of those personnel. So that's just cost of those personnel. Does that make sense? So cost of water doesn't need to factor into this.
Doesn't that make the assumption, though, that the reason that the cost has gone up is because of personnel?
No, because I don't include.
You've only related those two items together?
I haven't included cost of water in the analysis. It's not required for this. This is looking at how much staff costs we're inputting per output. That's what this is looking at, not the cost of water. The cost of water is another variable we'd have to look at overall, which I know has gone up, but I don't know what percentage of our budget it is. All I can tell you is, if we produce the same amount per person, per year, or per day average, as we used to, we would have that savings in terms of personnel savings, not water savings. You're right, there's still water savings that we're gonna have to deal with, and I don't know how, you know, that may go in opposite direction, but that savings is still an opportunity that's real. Let's go to the water.
Is this reclaimed and potable? I don't understand the correct data that it uses.
This is just the whole water production department.
So this is reclaimed and potable?
Probably not the right name, but.
Is it treated, is this all treated water, or is this just reclaimed or just potable?
Mayor.
I don't know.
The water department does not include reclaimed, that's in the wastewater.
Right, okay.
It would include any changes that we have in, like, the valve exercising crews that we may not have had in the past. They're not directly related with water production, but it is an improvement of service in the system.
Okay. And then, quantity of households, obviously, because water meter readers are going house to house to check, so quantity of households would obviously impact. Only so many employees can go to so many households, so there has been some growth. Even if there's less water being produced, there's still some of the same factors.
That's correct. We're just seeing this for the first time, and we can dig into it and look some more?
Yeah, I need some more information. There's a lot that I don't understand about this thing.
Yep, and there's a lot more questions to be asked, no, no doubt. Like I said, it was everything I could do to just get to this point. Lot more questions to be asked, that's good. Okay, so I did a similar exercise in wastewater collection, again, trying to be specific to just the collection piece, not all the other things, and again, to the metric that goes with that, which is the influence million gallons per year, okay? So, same idea, the average was 3.97, now it's 2.58, 35% decrease in collection per full-time employee. Again, potential ongoing savings, just based on, yes, this is peanut butter, and there's a lot of questions here, as far as we're doing averages peanut butter. No one knows what I mean by that, but this is just, we're playing with averages here. But, the point is, I don't understand why with technology being, really should be improving our ability to produce water and to treat wastewater per employee. I mean, if nothing else, just, it makes no sense to me why these trends in both, I did not cherry pick anything, but you have a very similar trend in both. No, I did not cherry pick anything. I picked the two most obvious metrics I could find, and I spent as much time as I had available crunching the numbers. If I could have done more metrics, I would have. I didn't, I just ran out of time. I picked the most obvious.
I just feel like it's a little disingenuous to put charts up here that are picking really two metrics, and that is all, and really not providing any background information to the council or the public about how you got to these numbers. I have zero data and information to be able to back any of these up, and I can't, I have so many questions about these charts. I'm trying to understand your methodology, and at the same time, understand really where you're going with this. I'm not trying to be critical at all. I realize we're all limited in time. I just feel like it's a little disingenuous to bring charts without added data and backup for the rest of us to understand.
I have to, I don't know what's disingenuous about it. It's maybe more questions to be asked, but it's all with sincerity, and all with genuine intent, and in all honesty, and I really didn't cherry pick. So this is the beginning of a conversation, I understand that. There's a lot more questions to be asked, but this, just on its face, really does not seem right to me at all. I would think over two decades of data, we should be able to see some trends for the opposite direction, really. I mean, I really would expect that, between economies of scale, one, improving technology opportunities to make the most of your workforce, two, I would think the trend should be the other way. I just, it makes no sense to me. So, that's just to point out that I'm not ready at all to, here's the point, I'm not gonna raise rates on people who are forced into a monopoly. It's a government-enforced monopoly. You have no other options, okay? Trust me, I'm in development. If you want to dig a well, it's pretty much removed. Your ability to do that is very, very limited. If you want to do a septic, that's also very limited, although we do have some opportunities. You're pretty trapped. I'm not going to force that on people unless I've left no stone unturned. And this, to me, is clear evidence of opportunities, evidence of opportunities for increased efficiencies. Why? Because we've done better before, okay? I know we can do better because we've done it. Okay, so the next, the next thing I wanted to talk about was just real quick, the, put up the slide with the study projected operating results for the, a water system, please. Yeah, it's hard to see that, huh? The title, anyway, it's hard to see that label, but, anyway. All right, so the study, I spent lots of hours going through the study to understand it. Lot of great work in here. One of the things they'll disclaim right off the bat, and you have to be fair, everything they're doing is based on data they've been given by our staff, okay? And you really can't go very many directions with a lot of this. As far as specific rate structures and all that, yeah, there's a lot of discretion they could have done there, but as far as the overall financials of where you gotta go and where you need to end up, you're pretty much forced based on the data you're given. It is what it is. It's based on the parameters that are given. So, I'm not faulting the study. It's doing what it was designed to do, but there's, here's just a couple examples of concern I have. So, for the beginning-of-the-year cash in the water system fund, the $33.5 million that's there is already very far, I mean, I would say significantly off. Look in your budget, preliminary budget we just adopted, you'll see the estimate, as of tonight, anyway, is actually 5.0, you know, almost $4 million higher than that. So, that's, we're already, again, when we talk about budgets, and there's a good reason for skepticism. We see how much these numbers tend to be off, and so, already, that's off. The next number, and Kelly and I talked about this, I appreciate the work she's done, and we're doing a lot of great things, moving in the right direction in so many ways. I don't mean to be overly critical, but as we dug in here, and kudos to her for giving me the data behind the assumption of $13 million a year set aside for repair and replacement out of this budget right here, because that $48 million includes $13 million a year going for repair and replacement. She gave me the way that that was calculated and analyzed, and it makes sense, as far as we have the total assets, the value of those assets versus their useful life, do the math, here's how much we gotta set aside per year to replace that. That's great. But my next question was, okay, but what about the money we've already got set aside for that purpose? Well, there's $88 million already set aside for that purpose. Where does that get credited out of here? The answer was, it doesn't. It doesn't get credited out of there. Now, there was some reasons, and she's gonna speak for herself on that, and I understand some, but I disagree. I disagree. And I think you have to include the money you've already set aside and credit that off, and if you do, then you end up with a number that is $2.4 million, and that's an ongoing number that would change. So that's very impactful to this analysis. It changes things dramatically, okay? So just after one year, let's, we're missing my little call-out at the bottom there, I'm sorry.
Let me zoom out here.
Just, yeah, you drag it up. So, just those two things alone, all right, changes our number, and this is with no increase. Keep in mind, the $27 million ending balance down there, in this study, includes the increase. So even if you back out the increase and consider the two things that I talked about, the actual ending balance is gonna be higher than what we project here. So, I mean, I just, I think there's more work to be done here, and I also think we have some time to do it. I know that there's some urgency here, I don't doubt there's some, but I think we got a good year or two before this really becomes critical. I really do. And we can spend some time to make sure we get this right. So I am not at all ready to raise rates on folks. I think we have some more work to do. So Mayor, thank you for the time. I know I rambled a little bit. There's a lot moving here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Anyone else wish to comment on this as we prepare? All right, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, if I might?
Oh, please.
Excuse me.
Yeah, Eric.
We actually, with the request to move the public hearing date later, we need to have that date posted in the notice of intent. So, we've got a couple of options. There's a September 20th council meeting, which could be considered for the public hearing, or an October 18th meeting as well.
We have our strategic planning retreat, I think it's on the, I just want to make sure we're not piling on to staff as we, say it again, I'm sorry, Lisa. October 22nd, okay. Okay. Let's do this. If it's okay with the council, I look to you all, you all know your own schedules. Let's move this to, we only have one meeting in October, don't we? Let's do September 20th on this. Is that all right with the council? Councilmember Cook? It's okay? All right, September 20th, let's do that. That gives a whole month before a retreat, since I know that's a heavy lift for everyone and the team.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Taylor.
If I can make a comment here?
Absolutely.
Or two. I really appreciate the research here, that Councilmember Peterson. I don't think it's fair to say it's disingenuous. I mean, this is the type of work that fiscal conservatives do. They dig in, and I know that if he's given other data that shows that this analysis isn't correct, I know he'd be the first one to embrace, you know, additional perspective on that, and we've seen that in the past. I just don't think that's a fair thing. I think this is really what fiscal conservatives do. They don't raise rates or taxes when it's not necessary. They do everything they can to not, to avoid. They just don't bring a rubber stamp down if they have any indication that there might be a way to stretch our dollar, to do a little bit better. And I just want to applaud the work that Victor did here on this and others. I'm glad we're extending this so that we can do the research, because if we claim to be a fiscal conservative, I think we need to act like one and do... conservative, I think we need to act like one and do some good research, because this is, this is an indicator, is it bulletproof? No, probably not, and I think Victor's the first one to say it's not, but this is what, this is what we do, and where we come to a conclusion that we absolutely have no other option, and this is absolute cost recovery, then, and that means a fee increase, then we should do that, that's my position. But if there's opportunities to lean out processes, to increase efficiencies, or even just get back to where we were prior, I think that's the work that we need to do, I think that's the work that fiscal conservatives are committed to doing. So Victor, thank you for this analysis, it was well worth our time.
Councilmember Anderson?
Just very quickly, I agree with Councilman Taylor, we need to be as responsible as we can be, fiscally conservative as possible, but I don't want to feel like I'm doing internet planning here, that I'm consulting the internet, which I don't trust at all, I want to know that we're getting to the right numbers, and that's, I'm glad that we've got some extra time, that Councilman Peterson can work with the staff, and we can hear back from the staff a little bit more about this.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I just want to point out, this isn't the first time we've discussed this this evening, we started talking about this last fall, and our staff is standing there, very diligently standing there, looking at us as we're talking about this tonight. I do want to point out that we started talking about this at our retreat last fall, we talked about it at our financial retreat this spring, and then it was brought forward to us tonight to actually officially open it for discussion and to take it out to the public, and, and when I say take it out to the public, both of those events were public events, and anybody could attend them, and they're posted online for all of the presentations that you gave during that time, too. So I just want to point that out to the public, too. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think we're ready for a motion with a date certain. Anyone want to take a stab at it?
Sure, Mayor, I will.
Perfect.
Motion to direct staff to publish a notice of intention for the increase of water, wastewater, reclaimed water, trash rates and fees to the public hearing date of September 20th, 2018.
Second.
Did we cover what we needed to in that? Excellent. Please vote. Councilmember Ray, are you on the phone still? I think he's had to, he said he, yeah, okay. All right, that motion carries with a 4-2 vote, thank you. That moves us to agenda item 28. Anyone want to offer a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 6-0 vote. I like that green board, it's awesome. Boards, commission, and committee reports. Anything from our council liaisons? All right, moving on, we do have a future meeting agenda item, which I think was requested at the last council meeting, that'll be held at our next May 17th meeting, and I look to Town Manager Baner for a report on current events.
Thank you, Mayor. Member of the council's the first one to thank you for recognizing a lot of the staff members that you did. Earlier in the evening, we're very proud of them, especially Dina, and the great service she does to victims that move through our courts to help them through that process. She is a wonderful asset to this organization, as well as our longtime mechanic who has done great service through the year, so thank you for that. Also, wanted to just recognize our economic development team, most of who are not here tonight. They are down in Tucson at the Arizona Economic Development Conference, Annual Conference, where our department is being recognized as the large economic development department of the year by the AEDC, and Dan Henderson, our director, is being recognized as the director of the year by the AEDC. So greatly appreciate the work they're doing, and to help existing businesses expand, as well as new businesses relocate to our community, so congratulations to them for well-earned recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. Report from council on current events?
Mayor, I would love to report on the Gilbert Leadership Class 26 project. We will have a ribbon cutting on Saturday morning at, I'm looking on my calendar to make sure that I have the time, right before I announce, at 9:00 a.m. across the street in front of the Public Safety Building. The class created two exchange zones, I don't know if you've heard about them, two exchange zones, one at this location and one down at the South Area Service Station, for people to come and exchange goods sold, purchased, and they both have electrical, so that if you purchase a computer or something that you need to plug in, you can test it there. They're also being used for custody exchange locations, too. That way, people, we found out through this process the class did, that a lot of people are doing custody exchanges in front of our fire departments, it's not necessarily the best place for them to go. These two locations were a lot of them locations that they have tables and chairs, and like I said, electricity, and there's also a camera observing the locations at all times. So it was a great project for the class, they're very excited to be able to come and cut the ribbon on that on Saturday morning, and I think you and I will both be there, definitely.
Terrific, thank you. Anything else from council? All right, just one update on current event, and that is the Monday morning at 8:00 a.m., our Public Safety Memorial that we will hold at 8:00 a.m. right out at our Public Safety Memorial in front of our police station. So we, of course, invite all the public to participate in that and to honor our men and women who serve. So thank you, thank you, Chief, for doing that. Is there a motion to adjourn our, or to recess our meeting and reconvene an executive session?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion, a second, please.
Peterson and Peterson.
That's not a law firm. Yeah.
It might be some.
All right, all in favor, we'll vote by acclamation. Aye?
Aye.
All right, that's all of us, we will adjourn this and have a very brief executive session. Thank you all for participating tonight.